This time we'll call the Tuesday, November 15th, 2011, meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. And if you would, let us invoke God's blessing before we proceed. Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for the opportunity to serve you and to serve our fellow citizens. And tonight, Father, we just pray that you'll impart wisdom to us, you'll give us clarity of mind, and you'll give us purity of purpose. What we say and do and even think here tonight will please you and be for the better of the men of the folks in this county, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Smith, are any adjustments to the agenda from the staff this evening?
No, sir, there are no adjustments.
Okay. Any member of the board have an adjustment of the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda.
Motion to be accepted, agenda is presented.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman for approval of this agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no presentations of awards that I'm aware of this evening, so we'll move to appointments before the board. We have a presentation from the representative of the North Carolina Department of Transportation in regard to the proposed Iredale County 2011-2012 Secondary Road Construction Program. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Patrick Norman. I'm the local district engineer for the Department of Transportation here in Statesville and manage Iredale and Alexander Counties. I have with me my assistant, Mr. Steve Bridges, as well. Tonight, we're going to present to you the 2011-2012 Secondary Road Construction Program. I think you all should have copies of this in front of you. I'll briefly read over the contents of this program. As you can see, our total allocation for the 2011-2012 fiscal year was $1,925,987,065. Under the paving of the unpaved road section, you can see we have two roads programmed under our Great Basin pave projects. First being SR 1820, Aaron Lane. It's eight tenths of a mile long from SR 1819 to Dead End. Estimated cost is $500,000. The second project, SR 1601, Branton Road, just six tenths of a mile long from SR 1598 to the Alexander County line. Estimated cost, $800,000. Below that, you'll see the paving alternates that we have. If for some reason we can't acquire right-ofway on the two program routes, we will move to these other routes in subsequent order based on funding. I won't read through those, but you can see those are on the list. Part B subdivision paving priorities, there are no longer any subdivision routes declared as subdivision routes on our paving priority list. That's why there are none there. Section C, various spot stabilization, secondary maintenance, unpaved routes. You can see we have $101,149.33 programmed there. This money is used for maintenance of unpaved roads, typically spot stabilization things, if we have pipe washed out, shoulder washed out, something like that. That money is reserved for emergency-type situations where we repair washed-out culverts, things such as that. On the next page, under our paved road improvements, you can see we have two projects there. These are both what we call full-depth reclamation projects. I'll read through those, and I'll explain a little bit more about that procedure. The first is SR 2474, Keaton Road. This will be from SR 2305, which is Berry Oak Road to Dead End. Estimated cost is $150,000. Length of this road is approximately six tenths of a mile. Likewise, SR 2752, Woodfield Drive, from SR 1338, Wallace Springs Road, excuse me, to Dead End. Estimated cost is also $150,000. This road is also approximately six tenths of a mile in length. And the full-depth reclamation is basically a procedure where the asphalt condition on these roads is in pretty poor shape, and the expense to go out here and try to mill, patch, and resurface this road would be pretty high. So what we do, we try to reclaim every bit of material that's there. So there was a reclamer machine that would basically mill the depth of the road, 12 inches deep, the full width of the road. Then they add about a 6% concrete mixture to this. They wet it and basically just set it up as stone. So all the material there, the asphalt, the stone, the aggregate, and all that stuff is mixed into one base that's stabilized with the concrete. Then it's rolled and paved as a normal, you know, normal paving operation. So that's basically the procedure for that. It's something that is pretty new to the state. It's not a new procedure, per se, but the state of North Carolina is trying to do some of these projects on these rural secondary routes that may otherwise not receive a whole lot of attention through our resurfacing programs because there's, you know, higher-prioritized routes for that. Below that, you see the various spot stabilization, secondary maintenance paved roads. $150,000 is allocated for this. Again, this is similar to the unpaved route spot stabilization money, where it's used to repair spots that are damaged from storms or whatnot. Patching asphalt, it can be used for that as well. Finally, you can see in Section 4, Funds Reserve for Surveying and Right-of-Way Acquisition, we use these funds to begin to discuss with property owners on future program routes. We discussed right-of-way acquisition with them. We also do preliminary surveying for right-of-way utilities out of these funds. Total amount for that is $74,838.32. Again, the grand total of the program this year is $1,925,987,065.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Mr. Norman, we do appreciate you being here. I want to thank you for one thing. I want to thank you for fixing that dip, the railroad overpass just east of 21 on Highway 70. Somebody finally fixed that thing, and that's been a blessing.
Right.
Could I ask you, just for the sake of those who are watching or viewing?
Yes.
You know, a lot of people will, or many people think, "Well gee whiz, why are we spending money paving a rural road that does not have a lot of traffic? Why aren't they widening road X, Y, Z where there's a whole lot of traffic?" Can you just briefly explain how that came to be?
Sure. Yes, every year, we receive an allocation from the state legislator that is allocated specifically for the upgrade of our unpaved routes. So this money has to be used for what we call grade basin pave, where we grade the roads to current standards, add a new stone base, and we pave the road. So the certain amount of money that is sent to us each year from the legislator has to be used on these roads. We have about 60 miles of unpaved roads left in Iredale County alone, and we're, you know, based on our budgets every year, we're trying to work down through those as quickly as we can. It's taken us a lot of time. Our allocation this year is about half of what it was in previous years because they're putting a big concentration on bridge replacement projects and bridge stabilization across the state and across the nation, for that matter. So as part of the legislation, we also get a certain amount of money that we can use on paved road improvements, which we try to do close to equal parts of that as well. But specifically, the money is for the unpaved routes and the paving of those.
Thank you. Did you say there's 60 miles? Was that the figure you gave in Iredale?
It's roughly 60 miles of unpaved roads that we still maintain in Iredale County.
On the priority, when the top two make that list, aren't they locked in? Do they not get bumped off unless like?
The top 10 actually are frozen once you reach the top 10. These roads are rated every four years.
Oh, the top 10?
The top 10, yes, are frozen. You can see on the program, 5F and 6F from the 2009 rating, this is what those were rated, 5F and 6F. So those were frozen.
Okay.
And like I say, it'll be rerated in 2013, and then the top 10 there will also be frozen for the next four years.
Did you do two roads last year, too, or do you recall?
We, the last time we presented, I think, to the Commissioners was in 2008, and we, because of budget restrictions, we've been working through those programs ever since then. I think there was four or five roads programmed at that time. But like I say, the allocation this year is about half of what it was in '08. So we've been working through already programmed routes.
Okay, so if these two roads that you've got as one and two now, if they go ahead and get paved, then the next 400, they will move up, and there's no way they'll get bumped by one lower than that then? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Those four are still frozen.
Well, I had a call late this afternoon about another issue, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Barkley Road, the resident said that road is in bad shape. Is that a city paving job or is that a state paving job?
That would be a state job.
That'd be a state?
East and West Barkley, off Highway 70, correct?
Okay, so, in other words, you all have a routine that you go through when they look so bad, and then you try to decide to pave it? Is that the way that's done?
Yeah, we have a resurfacing allocation every year where we look at roads, like East Broad Street's being resurfaced right now. That's one of the roads on that program. But we'll be glad to look at it and see what we need to do.
Well, I appreciate what you all do, and I want to tell you, those rural roads, they look the best now. They've seen whoever you had mowing this year did a good job, and the trash has been picked up. It's definitely better than what it was a few years ago.
Thank you. We'll pass that along to the contractor. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so what Mr. Norman is actually here for this evening is for us to accept this program that he's presented. So if there are no further questions, the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept it. Okay. Motion to accept from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Iredale Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Supervisors Chairman Jimmy Gray, going to speak in regards to the updated soil survey. Welcome, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to thank all the Commissioners for the time that we have here today. I bring great news from the Board of Supervisors of the Iredale Soil and Water District, which we're five citizens of Iredale County, trying to make, as you are, Iredale County a better place. Some 10-plus years ago, you all authorized the soil survey, which our old soil survey was over 50 years old, and I am very pleased to announce that it is complete and delivered, 500 copies. Now, the old soil survey was approximately half the size of my packet of maps here. So this is a very detailed breakdown of the county's assets and liabilities as it pertains to soil. You can go on this map, find any parcel of land, and find out what its limitations are, what its characteristics are, chemical interaction with, say, concrete or building materials. So builders and planning boards, this is a very valuable tool. Now, 500 copies sounds like a lot, but this is the first one in 50 years. So I do have a copy for each of the Commissioners that would like to have one, and we'll, of course, be passing these out to libraries and other places as needed, but still, we want to be very, we want to be good stewards of our resource here. 500 sounds like a lot, but it's got to last us a very long time. We also have a shipment of CDs that we can use on computers. They're a lot easier to carry around than this is, but they will also be made available. But we don't have the CDs at this time. We also have a folder to put these in that are ordered, but I don't have them at this time. I apologize for not having them at this time. Is there any questions about the soil survey that I can possibly answer?
Mr. Gray, one question I had was outside of agriculture. This would help if, say, we had a potential industrial client wanting to locate here, and they were looking at a potential site, that they may have some compaction problems with the soil. It would give them an idea of that.
Absolutely. When you go to the, there's over 100 pages in this section, which has no maps, the narrative that'll break down the characteristics of the soil type. If it's a shallow soil and a lot of rock underneath it, that would break it down there. Yeah, it's an excellent planning tool on...
Shiftec tanks?
Exactly. If a ground will perk or not, all those characteristics. I mean, you need a soil scientist, like, if you're going to go and develop a piece of property. Yes, you will need a soil scientist to give you the definitive answer, but this is a tremendous shortcut. If you didn't have it, you know, you can just go to this and turn to your section of the Iredale County, and you can find a detailed map. It's a wonderful tool for planning and construction, and of course, the agricultural aspects of it, too, are very beneficial to our farming community.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I mean, do we have some sort of a plan or an idea of how we are going to distribute those? Because I can imagine the co-op office, the ag office, would like to have some. Feel sure our planning folks could use some, probably over at Health Department, they probably could. So, you know, as opposed to dropping them off, you know, maybe utilize our staff to make sure that they get put in the right places.
You know, of course, the county paid for them, so they can be distributed at the will of the county. But we have been, in past years, and other soil and water districts generally are the keepers of the survey and pass them out as needed. We want those to go to anyone that y'all want them to go to, of course, top of the list.
Did you find anything significantly different? I mean, you would assume that the soil several inches down hasn't changed in 50 years, but did you notice, was there any, did y'all do any sort of comparative look, you know, especially as topsoil goes between 50 years ago and now?
Well, the, really, our federal partners were in charge of that, and they would probably be able to speak to that more so. NRCS and USDA actually are the people that compiled this. We were sort of the managers of it for the county, and I have not had a chance to go through and compare. Actually, I only know of two, I'm sure there's more out there, of the old surveys. We have one in our office, and I think my dad has one in his file cabinet that he had. If anybody remembers, they have a blue cover, paper cover, and most of them are very tattered by this time. But I have not compared the two.
Okay.
But is there anyone that I can?
Phone lent me his.
Would anyone care for this copy? And like I said, I have one in my vehicle for each one of you if so needed.
I would eventually like one.
I would, too.
I would, too.
Okay, I'll go back and, where should I leave those?
The front row.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you for your work, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Turn over to you at this point.
I'm going to turn the first three memos, Memo 3, 4, and 5, over to Susan Blumenstein.
In 2008, the county engaged Miller Management Associates out of Fletcher, North Carolina, to help us identify good candidates to operate the golf course that we inherited when we purchased the property on Twin Oaks Road. And through that process, we did, we went through an RFP process, and Twin Oaks Golf Club LLC was chosen as our, to lease, for us to lease that property to and allow them to operate a golf course on the property. Since that time, they have maintained the area, and it saved the county tax dollars and the solid waste disposal enterprise fund revenues from having to have that property bush hogged twice a year. I believe they determined to be about 127 acres that would need to be maintained by county cost, so we've not had to spend that money. Patty Keith is the president of Twin Oaks Golf Club LLC, and she remains in good standing with the county as the lessor, or excuse me, as the lesssee for that facility. She's paid her lease payments timely. She's made her annual settlement of 3% of gross revenue to us timely. But she has decided that she would like to make further improvements at the golf club and potentially increase revenues, provide better maintenance maybe to the buildings and the greens, which could, in the long term, benefit her and Iredale County. She came and spoke with Ron Smith, Tracy Jackson, and I, probably around two months ago, and we talked about working out a lease or making amendments to our lease that would provide her some additional cash flow for a few months and improve the lease substantially by removing the 90-day termination clause. When we're in business, it would be very difficult to borrow money or to seek investors with the 90-day termination clause, that the county could come in without cause and say, "In 90 days, you need to be out of business." So we decided, and we talked about some of the changes, and we have, in this memo, recommended some changes, and that is to go ahead and terminate the existing lease and execute a new lease beginning December 1st to continue until November 30th, 2020. In addition, the existing lease requires monthly rental payments of $2,000 plus 3% of the gross annual sales. We would like, we're recommending that we waive that $2,000 a month rent for a period of six months. This would be a one-time waiver. Nothing else would change except for, beginning next July, and for each year thereafter, the base rent would increase 4% annually. We'd also recommend that the termination clause of 90 days be eliminated, and it be changed to give Twin Oaks Golf Course LLC one year that they would have to notify the county if they chose to terminate the lease, and the county would give them four years if we were going to terminate the lease. I've talked, we've talked extensively with David Lambert about this, and he estimates it will be at least 24 years before he would need that site for either waste disposal or cover soils for other areas of the line landfill. And that's the recommendation we bring to you tonight, those changes to execute a new lease beginning December 1st, a six-month waiver of the rent, 4% increases a year on the annual base rent beginning next July, and to amend the termination clause that was from the original lease. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or Patty Keith, the president of Twin Oaks, is here if you would have any questions specifically for her.
Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein, or Ms. Keith?
As this is presented, it's basically revenue-neutral to the county over time?
That's correct.
Ms. Blumenstein, I received a phone call this afternoon. I won't divulge the gentleman's name without his permission, but there is a possibility, and I'm not being critical of the agreement you presented here. Based on the information at the time, I think you folks have done a fine job. There is a potential for additional capital investments, what I've learned from the conversation I had by telephone this evening, and I made Ms. Keith aware of that, and she'd had, I think, some preliminary discussions with these folks, but did not either understand or they had not communicated their intent, nor had they expressed their concern over the length of the term. And I'm not going down too far on them when I say they considered that to be somewhat of a disincentive relative to the amount of money they were potentially going to invest. And I do realize that we have an understanding, and Ms. Keith has made plans based upon our extension of the lease and based upon the waiver of the rent.
Okay.
So in light of that, what, again, nothing critical of the work you've done here, but in light of this development, what I would like to see is postpone a decision on this matter for 90 days and allow these folks an opportunity to negotiate the level of capital investment these outside folks are willing to make, and Ms. Keith have an opportunity to talk to them and come to terms that she would feel comfortable with. And then at some point, I'm sure we'll engage the staff again in those discussions to develop another recommendation.
That's just...
And...
That should work fine.
Okay, so if no one has anything, any light to shed on this beyond that, I would like to offer a motion that we postpone this for a period of 90 days and to give Ms. Keith an opportunity to talk to these folks and come back to us with what the expectations are of these investors and what it would take for her to feel comfortable with proceeding forward. And I told her in public that, and in private, so I'll say it publicly so she can hold it to me, I will not discuss the, discuss the terms of her lease or her agreement with these other people to anyone else until they've formulated a proposal. I think that's only fair to them. So is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. But thank you for your work.
Well, thank you. It was a great effort. The next item I have is Budget Amendment Number 20 to Recognize and Appropriate JCPC Level 2 Funds. Earlier this year, I believe it was on September 20th, I brought before you a request from Berium Springs Home for Children. They were applying for a Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Level 2 grant. This was a competitive grant statewide, and they had two different programs that they were submitting for. They were one of 13 programs statewide that did receive a grant award. Theirs is for $100,000. I believe they originally applied for $129,000. These funds will be used for sexual abuse intervention services to provide therapy to children that are in the, already been adjudicated by the courts. There are very few therapeutic options for these children, and I believe that they can be from 10 to 17 years of age. Juvenile court counselors supported this program 100%, and so did JCPC. I'd ask that you approve this budget amendment so we can start receiving those funds and paying Berium as they provide the services.
Any questions? No questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Amendment Number 20.
Okay, motion for approval of Budget Amendment Number 20 to recognize and appropriate juvenile crime prevention Level 2 funds. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. My third item is to request that the board appropriate $1,400 in capital funds that were appropriated during fiscal year 11 to Iredale Statesville Schools. They did not request the reimbursement of those funds to them until a few weeks ago, and we've closed our fiscal year. I had actually rolled this into reserve for school construction for Iredale Statesville Schools, so it's not affecting our undesignated fund balance. And I'd ask that you approve Budget Amendment Number 21 for $1,400.
Okay. Any questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Budget Amendment 21.
Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Memo number six is a request from Ben Garrison, our transportation director. Uh, it's for a budget amendment number 21A for the acceptance of some ARA funds and the amount of over $101,000 to allow him to work with, uh, with the state on the ARA transit camera project.
Mr. Garrison, could you indulge me just a minute before we proceed here?
Okay.
Ms. Smith, I want to revisit the, uh, Twin Oaks issue. I'd, if I did not, Madam Clerk, I apologize. I meant for part of that motion to be that we would waive the rent for 90 days while they negotiate. That, that was part of the original recommendation, and I don't think Ms. Keith ought to be penalized for a motion to delay coming from this board, so... Without exception, can that be included as a part of the motion? Okay. Thanks, sir. Okay, Mr. Garrison, thank you.
Thank you. Back when the NC DOT received ARA funds from the FTA, uh, they decided to keep, uh, some of those funds for two statewide projects. One of those projects was of, of vehicle maintenance software, and the other project was to put video cameras onboard all rural transit vehicles in North Carolina. They were looking for pilot projects for this, so Aridale County and Elizabeth City were, were chosen as, as pilot projects. And during that process, I, I learned a lot about cameras, probably too much, because they approached me about, uh, hitting up the project, uh, for the DOT. Basically, what I would be doing, I would be working with the, uh, the vendor, the transit agency, and the NC DOT as far as the installation and training that would take place with these camera units. The, uh, project will last, uh, for 15 months. Uh, it was approved last, or on, uh, November the 3rd by the Board of Transportation. The project would actually start December the 1st and would end, uh, February the 28th of 2013. That's when they hoped to have all of the, uh, the work, the work completed. What I will be doing is I will be devoting 75% of my time to this camera project, and the other 25% will be allocated, uh, to working with folks in, uh, planning, because we're now part of the planning department, uh, training, uh, those folks how to do some of my administrative duties such as the, the grants and so forth. Um, I'm, I'm excited about the project, and I see, I see a tremendous potential for, uh, this technology on, on transit vehicles in terms of, of security and, um, training of our employees and verifying what, what goes on. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Garrison? Okay. Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion. I move for approval of budget amendment number 21A. Okay. Motion for approval by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Final administrative matter is a request for approval of the November 1, 2011 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion for approval of the November 1, 2011 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Vice Chairman Norman makes a motion for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. First is the Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee. We have eight announcements. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, two announcements. Purchase of Development Rights Committee, three announcements. Recreation Advisory Board, four announcements. zoning Board of Adjustment, three announcements. Board of Health, three announcements. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. Facilities Task Force for Schools, we have three appointments available this evening. Chairman, I have an appointment, uh, nominated for that one. Okay. Uh, Mr. Scott Clontz. Scott Clontz. Okay. Are there any other nominations for the task force?
Yeah. For the Southern Quadrant, um, Ms. Connie Evans.
Connie Evans. Okay. Are there any others? If not, I move that we close the floor to nominations and appoint Mr. Clontz and Ms. Evans by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Personnel Advisor Committee, and we have one appointment. And we have one...
Tammy Bowlin.
Yeah. Is that a nomination?
It's a nomination.
Okay. Mr. Robertson nominates Ms. Tammy Bowlin. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Ms. Bowlin by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare Board of Directors. Term for Dinah Daniels expires on December 31, 2011. She's able, she's eligible for reappointment. This is only a six-month term because we'll be merged into the new entity by then. Mr. Chairman, I nominate, uh, Dinah Daniels. Okay. Nomination of Ms. Daniels by Commissioner Mitchell. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Ms. Daniels by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have Adult Care Home Community Advisor Committee. We have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations. Hearing none, I move we postpone this appointment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Nursing Home Advisory Committee. We have two appointments. Floor is open for nominations. I nominate Ms. Brenda Spees. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Ms. Spees by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business? If I can say this, I want to thank everyone for all the, uh, the phone calls, the visits, the cards, and, uh, everything you did, the expressions of, uh, sympathy in regard to the passing of my mother. I thank each and every one of you, and it was a difficult time, but, uh, God bless me with a good mouth. And, uh, one of the benefits of that is I, I've, uh, I've gained a lot of friends on this earth, and I, I appreciate, respect, and love all of you, and thank you very much. Okay. Public comment period? Anyone sign up to speak this evening?
No, sir.
Mr. Vets, you don't have anything to say this evening?
(laughing).
Okay. Good. Any new business? Mr. Chairman, when we have our next, uh, uh, planning retreat, uh, I think the county manager will talk about that.
Can I answer that question in just a minute if you'd like me to?
Okay.
If we could, um, this is what's been published. Can, uh, I've got my calendar, my personal calendar, that I would like to give to staff and let you all take a look at that before we even discuss this, because I, I've, I've got pretty good con, significant conflicts.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a request.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when we do have that meeting, if we could look at the, our courtroom space, who we have? Six courtrooms now?
I think we have four, and then we have two in the annex.
I wonder if, uh, Ca- if county manager could ask someone from the Court, uh, Clerk Court's office to, so, give us a calendar, so, here's my church calendar, and put it out in the calendar form. I, I'd like four items for each day that the court is in session, um, the starting time that they start, the number of cases they have scheduled on the docket, the, uh, number of cases they hear and close that day, and then the adjournment time. If we could have one, one calendar for each of the courtrooms for a period of, since January 1st till November 1st, I would like to look at it, just see what's happening in our courtroom.
That's, uh, a friendly amendment. Could we include Mooresville in that?
Yeah, I want all, all of the courtrooms, so throughout the county, yes.
Okay.
As input for the Capital Reserve Fund, are we going to bring up the four-letter word, J-A-I-L?
No.
No?
Okay. Well, if we get a little help on some sewer, we won't have to.
(laughing). If they're meeting on Saturdays or nighttime, if they'll put that down also.
Mr. Bush from JC Fall called me this afternoon, Mr. Smith, but I, I didn't have time to return his call before it came, so I'll let you know what, what they've got on the table now, but they're, they're still interested. Okay? Okay. So, before we finalize anything, can go with this, Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna supply the staff with, with my block.
Most of this will be internally as, as far as staff, though, correct?
It will. There, there is, if, if we can just go ahead and discuss it, there's just a couple of things I wanted to get in front of you and get your thoughts on, because typically, you know, as you know, we have the traditional winter planning retreat in February or March. And in, which often is the case, you have a number of things that are fit in there, schools, uh, public service or public safety from, you know, outside agencies, courts, things of that nature. And if you look at this calendar, what I'm proposing is that we have one preliminary work session where the board would get together with the county departments, uh, on a more of a, not really a one-on-one level, but more of a group level, you know, our, our public safety, uh, departments, our development departments, um, library and parks and rec, you know, those that kind of stand alone, and have some discussions on those specific, those specific departments prior to getting into the winter planning retreat itself. I think what that would do is it would give, uh, the department head, give you all a good idea of what's going to be coming in the retreat and what's going to be coming in the budget with some of the needs, but it'll also give me and the departments a little more, uh, guidance on what, what you're looking at. And if certain things may not be on the table, we won't even bring them up, you know, things of that nature. Uh, you know, if you remember from last year, we kind of got towards the end of it, and, you know, certain departments, we, you know, we, we cut pretty significantly towards the end, and it'd be easier to do it on the front end if we can. I understand, you know, big issues such as the schools are going to be coming up later on, but I thought that might be a good idea, uh, to do that sooner. And that's that January 13th date, um, then that would allow me to go back to the board. And we, we're flexible on the date, uh, allow me to go back to the staff and get the budgets out, get them done reasonably, and then come back on March 2nd and 3rd for the winter planning retreat.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Smith?
You all, um, received an email from, uh, Judge, well, Gene, via, via, from Judge Collier via Gene Moore about a request for a meeting to talk about the red line, uh, transit coming out of Charlotte. Judge Collier's proposing a few, or two dates, November 21st and November 28th, which are both Mondays, with a fallback date of December 13th, which is a Tuesday. Now, that third date, the 13th, that's a joint meeting, um, the public is invited, other public officials, uh, it's going to be a kind of a group setting, whereas what I think the judge is looking for is more of an intimate, you know, smaller group session with the board on the 21st or 28th. This is totally at the discretion of the board, whether you want to have the meeting or not, and if so, um, when and where you want to have it.
28th, I'm definitely no-go. 21st, depends upon what time it is.
Would it be an evening meeting, or?
I don't, Gene, I don't, I don't know that he has an inclination.
It's up to you. It can be day or evening.
Evening would work better for me, but...
Isn't that the Tuesday, the 21st, isn't that when the Farm City banquet is?
Uh, Tuesday, the 22nd.
Tuesday, the 22nd. Tuesday, the 22nd is the Mooresville Parade as well. And that is Farm City Banquet.
Mm-hmm.
But you said 21st.
Yeah, he's proposing the 21st.
The 21st is agreeable to me. Where would it be? Any idea? Is that up to us?
I think it's totally up to you. Uh, I'm pretty sure we would have ample space somewhere, either South Wing or, you know, one of our conference rooms.
Okay. Maybe you want to schedule it for the 21st at 7:00 PM?
What day of the week? Let me know.
That's Monday?
Yeah, that'd be hard.
What I, what I know of this, I've just read in the, in the Charlotte paper, but it's a $500 million project, and I think they, between the state and Charlotte, they'll come up with half, and then everybody else comes up with the other half. I don't know who everybody else is, but the red line goes from Charlotte to Aridale, (laugh) Mecklenburg County to Aridale County. So, uh, if, I, I, I would, I would put this caveat to it. If this thing is predicated on us coming up with $250 million, we don't need to meet. You know, if, if that's, if that's the, if that's what it's going to boil down to is that we got to come up with $200 million, I just, I don't see us meeting.
Well, I have the same apprehension you do, but, uh...
We want to hear him out. We'll hear him out.
We're hearing that. I mean, I, I've dealt with Judge Collier over the years a lot of times out the airport, and I'm willing to meet because Judge Collier's asking.
Okay. That's fine.
I have a lot of respect for him. He's been good to work with there, port, and he's been very good to this, to this county and me personally, and I respect for him, but, uh, I'm like you, Mr. Robertson, if they're asking for $250 million, I'm financially embarrassed. I, I can't do that. We'll hear him out. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there's nothing else coming to our attention, I'll for motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.